We'll be to the flag in the United States of America and enter the Republic with which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You should have a motion second to have somebody to tie.
We'd like to have so.
President.
President will pro tell. Temporary this meeting.
I'll make a motion to have actually show we try to preside over this meeting.
Is that taken?
All favor.
Aye.
All.
All right, I have to read even minutes or if you can anywhere you say six.
I have a motion to approve the minutes and suspend the reading.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
All.
So.
So.
Second.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All.
Who's Mr.
Engineer.
We're really nervous, you have a lot of analysis. All right, so first our moment was moving right now towards the agenda here, we're we're going to university and Mary, um, we're going more for a budget. We don't have much to get there, but we're presenting later, but I don't know, so just have to. Picking up contracts, um, second, there will be a pre-construction meeting, that's what I'm sorry, there'll be a sewer pre-construction meeting approximately one month before they start, so I expect that being in March or April, according to the schedule they gave us, they wanted to start with those Robert affairs, that would be me, of course, but then we'll see what the restrictions say, so at this moment, no rules, just construction, okay, there, there is a resolution, so resolution of government body, Monty, I think you have, okay, so this is, the financing that's set up is through the DEQ, which is the Health Department in North Dakota, um, they subsidize loans, it's a 2% interest loan for your project. Um, I think this authorizes Monty to sign that, is that right, Monty?
Carry or I.
Carry or you, okay, so this is resolutions provided by the Health Department, sample at least, they want this passed. Attached to our engineered work and set out.
So.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion.
Second.
Yeah.
All favor.
Aye.
All opposed.
Okay, all right, so that takes care of the point of being there, it's like I said, I'm assigning contracts, that's just pre-construction, the alley improvements just found down there, there's a little pink bit left, that probably closed out in the springtime, as a reminder, this did authorize us to approve those minor, re-bid those minor criteria that we got most reported previously, we've not done that yet, because it was a hundred thousand worth of work, once you get those bids, and everyone has that, that work, generally like broken and this like this kind of sections throughout the city. Um, it's finished in states, um, the last meeting in December, um, generally had meant to mind that you don't see private project being built, you guys will take over your structure, that's done, we had asked, there's some corrective work out there, the job isn't done, it's not like, it's not like we're at the point where we're waiting, they have they have to pay for the last portion of the roof from going around, the city currently has that blocked off, it's closed traffic, I think you're restricting building permits out there, but there's some sewer corrective items to have, we'd ask them to have a corrective plan by the end of the year, they don't have that yet, it's not that far past the end of the year, but at this point, I think you should press them a little bit more, ultimately the city has the power to correct those things yourselves and assess the cost to that some of the issues had to, but that's like a worst case scenario fitting thing, but me nudging them, let me go so far, you guys probably would draft something to the city, he's in Zillow for asking for a corrective action, I'll address those sort of problems, I can even draft that later, I'd be happy to help them with that, but it's like to get some urgency on one month, um, with the good development over here, to get a plan, I don't think that was worth being, I mean, I'll tell you that stuff, but it's just, it's on my list of projects, I guess, I don't know if we need a motion for that or not, but it's.
We'll get something drafted for the next meeting, so that we can approve.
We have an enhancer from them, for them, and then I'll see reasons.
Something urgent, do you feel then?
No, no, kind of like with construction, your sewer job, springtime, when they start on it, it's just, now's the time. If the worst case scenario, you know, they run away and say, no, we're not going to fix it, then we should start now, the city.
Or it's completed?
No, we said we would not issue anything, that's exactly what I was going to say. They do have the foundation of that other home that is serviced by the new pavement, was approved prior to us putting that stop on any new building, but that would be no possible, no more building till till it's all done.
Far south.
Yes, southeast side.
To turn me clear, like, I'm not nervous about this, I just want to make sure all these are discussed, and it's accepted, good. That's really, I think, all I have, Monty, is that, some of those programs and items, you know, their, your capital improvement plan does list some other things that we will prioritize, would you want to prioritize them, we did two lift station, um, there's con, you have a number of lift stations, I can't remember how many, six or seven lift stations, and some of them are hooked up to your system, so the workforce is getting live updates on those things, there's probably a couple more that are coming around the bike here pretty quick, that either needs some updated controls, or could be retrofitted with those, they're not auto dialers, but it's, you know, you get an alarm system, it's not hooked up to your SCADA system, it's like down the system, right, then you just have to notice the red light down there, so I think the idea was, water project, we got the string brain working place, and now you've added a couple lift stations to it, so in my mind, I think you maybe want to do one or two a year to get all the lift stations that come to it, so those alarms can be real time, and, you know, address those problems we have, but it's just, there's some little things on the capital improvement plan that I'm just trying to remind you of, you know, when you feel that it's necessary, then you should do so with those things, just reminders. I don't have anything else, Monty?
No.
Okay, all right, well, legislative session's in session right now, I know I've been hearing some about bills, there's some hearing going on, things like cities, we're not there all the time, but you guys probably shouldn't pay attention to some of those things, there's some bills about restrictions and, and so, I just heard one today, a little bit, potential announcements, cities, for infrastructure, um, flex funding's a big deal in a lot of communities, it sounds like they're probably going to renew that program, um, the, uh, drinking water, uh, through the state water commission, a really, really good deal for you guys, you get your meters paid for, and then 60% cost share on the water tank and transmission lines in North Carolina, I would assume that program will be up again, but you never know, so, we have like a weekly meeting, we pay attention to what's going on on those things, and if there's a need for you guys to testify or something, I would assume that a little Monty and go over there, the next 90 days, there'll be enough stuff around there, this, any questions? Any questions for me?
July 17th, they're doing the touch a truck event again, that has been very popular, and she's getting on top of it, and I like watching the street call her already, maybe she can plan.
Your motion?
Second.
Real quick now, what is the, can you extend it to me, from where to where?
It would be the same as last year, from central till Second Avenue, and then part of First Avenue, to the post office, and then up to LA North.
Yeah.
Ooh, application, application, probably, I have exemptions. Last year. Hasn't changed, did it all from last year?
No, it's still under North Dakota Century Code 570208 subsection 36, that childcare centers and education centers can qualify for a tax exemption, on the structural only land is still taxable, and like this is said in the notes, yes, you did approve this last year.
So my concern, I just had a couple people come up to me and ask me if they've been, they, they feel like they've been living at the daycare while trying to sell their other house, I don't, I don't know any validity to that or anything, but with that.
That would prohibit them from qualifying for the exemption, yes.
So, we live in RV, so, we live in their other home, home yet, I guess, their home, yeah?
I don't know, I just heard it from two different people who I don't think are really, they've talked to one another, out in the wild, if you will, and it's just kind of something that, I heard it twice, from two different sources, and it's kind of, my ears are a little bit, I saw this, read this Century Code that you had, it's biased in that email, that's kind of, huh, so I don't know what to do with that information, I guess, at this point, but.
Is this something that, if you did get clarification, say down the road that they were living in it, go back and rebook it, after it's removed?
So, so, say down the road, you find out that they are living in that actual thing, is this, is this something we could go back and rebook, after it's removed? Technically, if they do, maybe they would exempt them from that.
When is that due for, after the year?
It's as of February 1, is when all the valuations and stuff are done.
So it's just a.
Yeah, so if we verify February 1 that they are not living in there, they would qualify for the year.
As of right now?
Yeah, we don't, no, and you could act on this contention upon verification, because as I could assure, make some checks on it, and I know, I know that the other home has not transferred to anybody.
And I'll make a motion to approve this contention upon verifying established residency.
Motion. Second. Second.
Even if they still, I mean.
I know it happens.
Nobody brought anything up to me, Dave was dealing with water, she said his office. My name's Bussing Library.
I do not.
We've just installed some water in the library, so, a little lot of thank you to all, and all the stuff that you've ever shut up, um, if you plan on doing some more in February, so, other than that, I don't have.
I wasn't invited until last semester.
No, well, you're invited for February, so.
Okay, please. First thing I need to do is chief, allow on the, I did get the worry on this, so, since Dan, well, after the little, since he left chief, um, none of the chief can say, they call allowance of three million dollars, because not a lot of local, technically, you use their own vehicle, they all have, they're down to pick out, and now Corey realized that he's not in area that often, especially if somebody's up in pink all the time, so he's like, just starts in his personal vehicle, how time does respond to his personal vehicle anyways, um, we do have a new assistant chief, uh, which is in area all the time, so instead of him using his personal vehicle, getting a hundred dollars a month for vehicle, he's going to use the command of the vehicles, that's part of the whole, so, assistant chief getting paid.
So, felt close, they were on pre-.
It was, we master chief getting paid to use his personal vehicle, for the assistant chief, uh, he'll allow a hundred dollars a month for chief, so three hundred dollars a month, so they're going to take radio and lights, I will be master to pick up and put it in, uh, your experience.
Motion. Second. Motion, second. Uh, discretion.
Assistant chief.
I have another second.
The master, so I just stand on.
What do you, oh, call? You're doing the three hundred dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
Weidrich. Hawkers. Stern.
What do you pass?
No, I got, yeah, 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 I got, lots of.
What do you, what do you, what do you came over? Are we sure we don't talk about free exchange any person?
Uh, just asking. Thank you, no.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
So, I'm not sure, this might happen to be the last meeting now, uh, did we all talk about, I talked to Deputy Waller, no?
Okay.
So, from the last meeting, I talked to Deputy Waller, uh, probably he's doing, you know, ordering all their equipment, and we got to talk about, they used, he gave me all contact information, and I reached out, they reached out to me, we talked, actually, Dana's supply so far, I've talked to him twice on the phone, and we've got numerous emails back and forth, a lot of what we have, what's funny is, um, I sent out one last email to the person I was sending with, and I got a phone call back from a new representative with Cat, which he seemed to be, you know, easy to deal with, he even talked about, you know, prison, they had had some problems, and that person's no longer doing equipment and stuff like that, he's got, you know, you got one vehicle, and upfitting one vehicle, you should have had it made before now, um, so, um, there's so much, so a couple of meetings ago, uh, I had, I think I had, and that email had said that we were just waiting on equipment to come in, which kind of gave the impression that the bill is, you know, ongoing, um, in getting another email, setting out another email after that, let go, whatever, they said that we do have the vehicles on site, but another vehicle was there, so it's like, well, what the hell, so we'll fast forward to dealing with Dana's supply, and like I'm actually, this guy, he told me, he told me, he wants to take the vehicle on hand and go over another outfit, and get it up, in talking with Dana's supply, um, I sent him everything he had, all the equipment he had, which, I'm sure you guys have seen, sent him that, um, he gave us a quote for just the outfit, if we wanted to take vehicle from Cat, he also gave us a quote with the outfit and the vehicle that they can get, which is the same exact vehicle, just a year newer, now, quote eight, and if my map is right, my map is, it's about, one, okay, well, one, it's a thousand dollars left, um, now, um, I did reach out to him again, and talked to him about getting a radio, so we have a radio for our units, which, you know, however, that's, you're going to be a radio in there, um, reached out to him, like, it was like midweek or something like that, um, and he has yet to get back to me on that, um, for whatever reason, I'm not sure, I actually have to say, yeah, because I asked him about a question for him, and he said, I'm going to try and get you that quote for your meeting tonight, I haven't got that quote yet, so, uh, it's coming, it's probably coming pretty soon, I'll probably see it sometime next week, um, we have Dana's supply, uh, and he talked to him, they will give us regular updates, uh, according to, he's actually saying, he said, this is your vehicle, there's lights on it, all that stuff, uh, time frame, so, initially, Cat says, June, August, time frame, now, keep in mind that they're still doing the merging of different locations, so in talking to Cat, he's like, you know, because I asked him, I said, how, how, how I'm glad that that date said delivery, he said, honestly, he said, we're doing this merger, and I can't, I can't, I changed it, I said, all right, he's like, once again, you want to cancel the order? Talked to Dana's supply, and he brought, he reminded me that. With first order, they ordered three units, and they actually waited a few extra weeks because they're, they're good. With the ordering of the units, and all these, installing it all, and delivery, it was a few weeks past three months, and that was three units, he said, I'm going to tell you, I said, I have to tell you four to five months, I have to, he said, but you have one goal, he said, I'm not promising anything, but usually when we get the okay to, you know, go ahead and start a bill, we get into it, and he's like, there's a chance we'll get it sooner. This is Dana's, this is Dana's supply, um, so, and the thing that they ask is, if we go ahead with Dana's supply, uh, we go ahead with the vehicle, they want the vehicle paid for right away, and then if we choose to, we can pay for the outfit, for the outfit, whatever you want to call it, and pay for that later, you know, whatever, whatever you want, um, now, there is the, I guess, yes, one quote from his owners, um, from what I hear, they say, if we can't, we're going to have a 15-month meeting, or 15-year meeting period, so let's just say we just buy it for it, so, essentially, we're waiting three and a half months to get a vehicle, and then in the year, we can send that list. In, in, we can send our list to. We can send our list to a communication, and they can outfit it for us, but me personally, it's not, if you can get it from his motors, I would prefer to, Dana's supply, it sounds like the outfit to go with, uh, and hypothetically, okay, since we just voted on the touch truck, there's a really good chance we have our number here, by touch truck, and we showed out.
Do you know what those names are, our current communication do outfits?
They do, they do some, I'm not quite sure if they do what we need them to do, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what they scale they.
They can, and they do, but it's not like something that they do, like, I would refer to weed weeds.
I've got, I've got a lot of our communication, but, you know, I mean, the last time we took it to them, they did put a hole in our. For the, for the, for the place, they, and they made that, right, they made that right out of it, I'm just, I'm just going there, there's money.
Things like that, the right on top of it, like, so soon you got, yeah, yeah.
We got to go. Oh, look, just add something, um, I don't know if we can vote on it at all today, but Cat was wondering about the order, you know, you know, if we need, he just wants, I think he just wants, if we're going to do a fine, if not, to pick it up, because like I said, he's dealing with a lot of damage control from, you know, whatever.
So I say you should go, so for four to five, if it's, send a, leave just a really random email that doesn't have anything to do with.
Yeah.
Well, I honestly, it's just the way that my public, everything did seem streamlined, it did send us teasers along the way to the build, to show us progress of the, it's. whatever he's got to do.
So, I say you should go so for four to five, if it's, send a, we just really random email that doesn't have anything to do with. I honestly, it's just the way that my college, I have a supply. Everything did seem streamlined. It did send us teasers along the way to the build to show us progress of the, it's, I've never heard it come from Waller one time or even nearly as much, even one time. Regardless, not being able to get a hold of these guys or questions that they have. Or if I had a question, it would be a wall, and Waller was always able to get a hold of them to get it answered. I, I, Dana's supply, I mean, they, they got it figured out. They got the process figured out and, and, uh, the product that we received from them kind of shows that.
And that, that dollar amount for the delivery, that should be coming with the, you know, uh, quote book. Uh, did you have it in here? Oh, delivery. I just didn't have it on the front. I asked you.
No, it's. Can you help me switch on the siren system? I've heard the first day in last year, obviously, there's some coming out.
I just. The tower not work.
Because we're waiting on one power, I think they set that up on line number one, right? What I was told goes up by U town or Bell Court. Lighter town reservation. Yes. Correct. There was a lawsuit to victim security. He's been fighting. That's been rolled over. So, that's just. We're running out of time. Yeah. So, the thing about it. I did ask, told somebody to get the quote on the radio. What part of it is gonna get more and more dual man? You know, we have guys got a couple of dual man radios. Because everything's working like old. So, kind of order on that, so we're not buying one, one brand new radio now and maybe six months later, it's gonna be garbage and we gotta buy it.
That's my question. I just tested it in the label wise, uh, for what we have at the PD. So, I'm just trying to picture what we're under and everything. Just make sure it's the new.
Yeah. If you tell us we're in our radar, in our radar.
Instead of like.
Off the box, that's what we're gonna go on to.
Yeah.
We'll have to confirm, because it may be a different radio, but it may not be. I don't know. It seems like the in-car radios are a lot easier to get a hold of and to, uh, watch cheaper for some reason before. Did you see the shooting is included in this? There's transportation from DSS. Well, I don't know how you guys feel. You kind of made your opinion. I don't think it's worth going to Cat. They're thousands of dollars more. They've got nothing but bad luck with them. So, yeah. They hear our radio. No fault of ours. Yeah. And no fault of ours. But like they make a motion to purchase this vehicle and they have to charge for Dana's supply for ninety thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars. The radio, they'll probably do this.
Okay, okay, we have a motion. Give us a second. Discussion.
So, if we're gonna buy the vehicle from here. You're here, Jason Motors, I guess, would it go? Would it go to Dana then? Or, or then like here, and if that, then we have to ship it there? Sure.
If we did from Jason Motors, we could, we could ship it down to Dana's supply. On, on that Dana's supply doesn't actually have a dollar amount of transportation, so I don't know how much that is. But the one from Cat, we do those, um, and then they're pretty close to each other. That one's one thousand one hundred and eighty-eight. So, we'd be looking for four thousand shipping down there. Because.
They're first.
If we ordered it.
There's no way that then. You know, then I guess we would then. You know, I mean. You know, I guess order it here.
Interesting.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it's still waiting on that fifteen. We're still waiting fifteen. Yeah, that's, that's assuming everything goes peachy at the factory, is that right? Where you guys have a lot. They don't. Dana's supply does not have it on a. So, they have, they have. All the questions are based off, we're talking here, here, right, getting this done, and making the order right there, and then. Where in talking to Dana's supply, how we work for this, just so we can get a semi accurate date of delivery. I like to shock the locals as much as I can to, um. What we're even at is this, we're helping users to take a vehicle. And it's kind of such, it's turning, ever since they stopped making patrol vehicle cars, everybody's been, you know, filling the vacuum and by, by ordering all these stop losing pickups and stuff, so it just turns into such a niche thing where it's so hard to get it. Brand new. This is the first time we've tried to get a pickup. Always been the top. Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's just difficult to get a used package vehicle from any manufacturer anymore. Certainly. This is the kind of kind of situation. The reason I like Dana's supply is it's kind of a. I get the whole local thing, but it seems like, like you said, we've been, you know, we should have had this way before now. And with Dana's supply, I mean, for right now, just for right now, it's kind of about one stop shop. I don't know, best case scenario for every one month, so, you know, there's, there's a sense that, I mean, we're gonna need more vehicles. And use this as a learning experience and make sure we, you know, if we're gonna get a piece of order, put it in that order, you know, well, for, you know, we need to.
Weidrich, Falkerts, Stern.
Pretty good with Alti? Get that guy's. Yeah. Uh, does there need to be a vote on canceling Cat? Cause all I've done, no right away. I will make a motion to. Cancel. My motion? Cancel the order. Okay, now this will be order of Cat. Okay, okay, motion.
That'd be best. Weidrich, Stern, Falkerts. Just contacted by Rathen Mayor PC to do our twenty twenty-four year end, December thirty-first financial audit. He will not exceed eleven thousand dollars of colluding travel and out of pocket expense. Yes. It's the same price as last year, what they had quarter last year. Falkerts, Stern, Weidrich. We don't have anything in writing. There were just a couple of gentlemen from the school that stopped to see if the city would be interested in donating funds for the yearbook processing. So, I'll leave it to you. We have the general donations funding that we budget for every year, so there are funds available. Wish to pursue that?
What does that look like?
We have, we have a thousand dollars that just didn't miss donations.
We are done.
Not for the yearbook. We have not, we've always just done. Not that I can remember for the yearbook.
What do we do?
We've done as much as three hundred and fifty dollars for.
They didn't really get much more info than that. I'm just looking to see it here.
Yeah. They had just stopped in the office one minute and said, you want to donate, does this city want to donate to the yearbook?
I'll have to find out.
Pretty much.
So, I guess. Okay, okay, motion. Give us a second. Discussion.
Stern, Falkerts, Weidrich.
All right. Recommendation letter, county engineer. It's like, uh, county always looking for a new engineer?
Yeah, the county put out an RFP for engineering services. Request for proposal. And, uh, more engineering doesn't tend to submit a proposal to them. Just asked if we would consider making some type of recommendation for them since they are working for us. Uh, it would be a different person. It wouldn't involve Jared because the county does more roads and stuff and that's not really his forte. It would just be somebody else in their office that would be doing it should they get the contract. And that's using some examples of different places. That's the letter I came up with. If you decide to go with something, we can always make changes.
Jerry, see this?
Yes, he has the numbers on it. I didn't show it to him again today.
Someone you can picture behind it.
Yeah, he has no concerns.
Maybe it's my understanding.
Yeah, we have. Yep.
So, my move, I guess, to approve it later. Motion, give us a second. Member? Aye. Opposed? All right, next. He's a tip cock.